Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of Bloomfield Hills Board of Education. This is Thursday, October the 11th. Madam Secretary, can you take attendance, please?
All board members are present except for Mr. Cohen and Mr. Ford.
Very good. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's been an exciting and very busy week this week, and I'm going to let Rob talk about the strategic plan process that got started up on Monday. But I want to say also, on Monday evening, we had our college night for Bloomfield Hills Schools, and I want to thank our counselors, our PTO, and everyone who helped to make such a fabulous event. There was over 100 college representatives here to talk with our students and their families, and it's always a really wonderful event and great opportunity for our children to think about all the hopes and dreams of where they might want to do with the next stage of their lives. So, thank you for that. I want to ask Vicki to put up a slide here. So, this coming weekend is the Bowers School Farm Fall Festival. And I think we're going to have a slide there, but...
There it is.
Nope, that's me. Oh, there we go, okay. So, that's this weekend. It's from 12 to 6 on both Saturday and Sunday. They're going to have a magic and mystery show, wagon rides, animals, food trucks, live music, bouncy house, and all kinds of other things. And I have an echo. Also this weekend is the Bloomfield Township Open House, which was on Sunday from 12 to 4:00. We're going to have the Bloomfield Hills High School Marching Band, local food trucks, snowplow and patrol car rides, canine demonstrations, and much more. There'll be a cake walk sponsored by the Bloomfield Hills Schools Foundation. So, please come on out, and it's going to be sort of enjoy the campus between the township and the high school, and have a real sense of community going on. So, that's from 12 to 4:00 on Sunday. So, you've got, it's going to be crisp and cool for a weekend, and be fun to go both to the farm and come on over to the high school and the township and have some fun this weekend. And just want to, and also on Wednesday this coming week, on the 17th, will be the MSBOA Marching Band Festival at the high school. We're going to have 10 marching bands from across Oakland County at the high school on the field. It's free and open to the public from 5:00 to 8:30 at the high school. And on next Wednesday, the 17th.
That sounds awesome.
If you're into watching marching bands, that'll be a lot of fun. Remind my colleagues who are signed up, that is also the same evening as the Oakland County School Board Association Dinner Meeting, and we will be voting on the bylaws, and we also having a presentation on information and technology and security. So, I'm hoping that those of you who are able to can come on up to Oakland Schools to be part of that. And so, I think that's all of my announcements, because I want to thank our crew this evening. Jack Hale, Shannon Stringer, and Vicki Chandler, thank you for helping to broadcast for our community. The other thing I wanted to mention, I don't have the details in my hands, but I know that there will be information on BHS TV. But our candidate forum was in this room on Tuesday night, and it was our legal, well, thanks to legal voters and our PTO for bringing that to our community, and that information will be, that presentation will be posted on our website and available, I think, live stream on the web and on BHS TV, and I think all the times will be shown there as well. So, that will be a great opportunity to learn about what's going on in our community. Okay, Rob, all yours.
I don't have a whole lot tonight. We have a couple of things I want to mention. That we did kick off our Bloomfield Forward Strategic Planning Process this week on Monday. We had a full house, a pretty packed room of about 60 people, and the group that was there really did some great work. We, the way that the meetings are structured, it's four meetings, four consecutive Mondays in October, so this was the first. The next one will be this coming Monday, and so on. And the purpose of the first meeting was really to do a level set, to let everybody know kind of what is the state of the district, what are the current challenges, programs, and basic operational things that are in place, some of the basic foundational data. So, our Learning Services Team and our special education, special educators, the various members of that team took some time going through, you know, kind of how we deliver instruction, what kind of services we offer, what the, some of our basic data points, and some of the achievement scores and things, and we went through all of that. It really was quite comprehensive, and it was a lot of data to take in. So, we had, also did some time doing some connecting activities to find out a little bit about how we all learn. We had a north, south, east, west kind of exercise, and that was really good. I think it really helped everybody understand that, you know, people are fundamentally have ways of coming at things, and we learned to kind of figure those out and respect those, our differences. So, that was good. I know I'm overly summarizing the day, and I know we'll be talking about this just a little bit longer in our agenda, so I won't go too deeply into it. But based on the feedback we receive, we had feedback sheets from that, and I received some feedback since then, we learned that there were some parts that people really liked, there were some parts that people thought we could have done a little differently, a little better, so we're taking that feedback into account. We've been working with our facilitator, and the facilitators are going to take, incorporate all that into the, into the next session. The next session will be kind of similar in that we'll be learning about some future trends that are outside of us, but also more about our other departments, our finance. We'll be learning about our financials, and also our communications, some of the results that you've already heard about from our community survey, and facilities, and we're going through all of that. And as we do, I think that should round out kind of a current state, and it'll enable us then to shift our focus to now what might some goals be? And we can think about trying to spend the next two sessions breaking into smaller groups and really discussing and generating the goals, the big hairy audacious goals that we should be chasing for the next three to five years. So, we're looking forward to continuing that process. And as a precursor to that process, I know you as board members have been working on refreshing our mission and vision, and that's going to be, it's kind of in a draft form. We'll talk about that a little later in the agenda. And I think when all this is kind of done, we'll have a public input period on the web, both for the mission, vision, and a public period comment for the goals that are drafted by the work group, and then hopefully be able to tie it all up and have you consider accepting it maybe by around Thanksgiving time. So, we're, I think we're on track. It's always a fun and exciting process, and as I told the group on Monday when I kind of welcomed everyone, I think this is a very important and opportune time for us. Not only have we by calendar date, you know, completed the old strategic plan, but really it's just, it's time, you know, it's time for us. It's, we're at a great time, we're looking forward, and it's really important what we decide these next, this next month or two. So, the last thing I just want to mention is count day. It was count day, and we're still tallying through the numbers and checking with our colleagues in neighboring districts, and we'll pretty soon have some numbers on what our student enrollment is looking like. I don't expect any huge swings, and, but we're still kind of combing through that, making sure we've got it accurate. And the reason it's important for us, of course, is our student funding is predicated on that. So, when you start, you know, you gain students or lose students, it affects your funding a little bit. So, really, that's it for tonight. So, thank you.
Great. Then we'll move on into our consent agenda.
Sure.
Jackie, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes, study session of September 13, 2018. Request to approve minutes, regular meeting of September 13, 2018. Request to approve minutes, study session of September 25, 2018. Request to approve minutes, study session of October 4, 2018. Request to approve amendment to the Bloomfield Township Police Liaison Agreement. Request to approve HR actions.
Do you have support?
Support.
Support for Mr. Politeer. Any discussion?
Madam President, I just want to mention, I watched the Bloomfield Township Board Meeting on Monday, and they approved the other half of the amendment that we're making, so that this is to communicate or to allow the, any video information that we have in our buildings to be able to be used in an emergency basis by the police department. So, this is a contract between us and Bloomfield Township. Bloomfield Township has approved this, so that when we approve it, it should be a done deal.
Thank you for pointing that out. That's a good, good point. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next, we're moving on into our general discussion, and first up, we have the report from our Instruction Committee meeting from September 24. Jackie?
Yes. Well, we had a great meeting in the, on our instruction. The first thing that we, we talked about was our state achievement data, and we had quite a long discussion on this data. Some of the points of pride are that our English language learners, all, all our student groups were above proficiency. We're second in the country for PSAT and SAT for ELA.
County.
Sorry. Sorry. County. Counting, not county. MSEP showed gains in language arts, and BHS is ranked first in the country.
County.
In the county. Sorry, I keep saying that. I want us to be first in the county.
Which was like...
We reviewed the top 50 of the 23, 2,2,343 schools, and we're making improvements and pushing through our continued focus on literacy. We've developed a protocol for examining the data, and we are developing other protocols for future data as well. The principals meet with the grade level teams, the classroom teachers can, are also working on this, and we have a workbook for parents, or we have a workbook for parents, right? And, sorry, I'm reading from our bullets.
Yes.
Yeah, bullets. It's an outline form. So, you know what we've been working on? Besides our continued focus on literacy, one of the things that we've identified in the past were that our various buildings were not necessarily using standards across all buildings that were the same, which makes it more difficult to use our data and to be able to figure out what are the strategies to really take our buildings and our instruction to the next level. So, this is something that's really been a focus that they've been sharing with us in BIC. One of the ways that they're working on it is the FANTIS and PENNEL. By using this system across all of our buildings, we're able to not only have the students, the teachers are able to get real-time feedback in order to differentiate and help their students, but also we can generalize and look at themes across buildings and across the district in order to help with professional development and any other strategies that we can use to really take our instruction to the next level. We just started using FANTIS, PENNEL, so we need another cycle in order, in order to be able to really start to get trends. If you know how data, if you have one point, doesn't mean you have a line, right? So, you can't really have themes yet. But when we have another cycle, we'll have another set of data, and that will really enrich how we can use data to be able to inform our instruction. And the same with our MSEP. Because of the change in some of the areas, we also need more, another cycle to be able to use that as well. Now, what we really looked at is not just our own data, we looked at the data in the county. You got it right this time. We looked at the data in, in our county and across different regions in order to see, because everyone's taking the same test every year, but the test is not the same every year, the data trends. If the data on the county level is going down and we're going up, even if we're not going up as much as we would like to go up, but if everybody else is going down and we're staying flat or going up, that really tells a story more than just looking at our own data alone. You have to look at it within the context of the data of all, of the exams in order to be able to get a feel for how our particular buildings are doing. So, having protocols to be able to examine the data and utilize the data is one of the things that is very important, and we looked at the research. And one of the most important things of the research is showing that when, when our instructors, our teachers feel confident that the practices that they're using are really making a difference, and that they are confident in using these techniques, it actually, this is one of the most important things that the research says, we'll be able to take our instruction to the next level. So, this is critical. So, it isn't just self-efficacy of our students who are learners, it's also the self-efficacy of our faculty who are also learners. And so, self-efficacy and confidence is critical in order to be able to have the highest functioning instructional team that we can. So, we are looking at, you know, different resources and different models. For example, in our Welcome Back Day, we had a professor from Columbia, and some of the models that we're using are from Columbia. And in our benchmarked top districts, they are also using similar model from Columbia. So, this is one model that we're using. We're looking at different models, but just to show that we are indeed benchmarking with peer top-performing districts in order to use the best models possible. I think this is sixth and eighth grade alignment. It's a grade, right? All right. Because it doesn't say grade, it just says sixth and eighth. So, the sixth to eighth grade alignment in the specialization of the teaching, we're doing a deeper study around the ELA. We're using the workshop units of study, and we're having middle school level units. Also, their application-based training with Columbia. And it isn't that everybody, that every single individual that we put up in order to attend this training in Columbia, doesn't mean that everyone we put up actually gets accepted. This is very rigorous, and so we've actually had applicants that have been denied. So, it is a very rigorous system. We've sent teams for training. We want to send our principals for training. We are looking that we really need to align our three middle schools first before we can align our ninth grade, right? First, we have to get our middle schools aligned, our grades in our middle schools aligned, and then we'll look at the alignment between the middle school and high school. This is what I just said about the efficacy being the critical thing. We were introduced to Hattie's 2018 Updated List of Factors that are related to student achievement, and so, and it's very critical that we are using a common approach to our literacy and numeracy, and a methodology that of workshop instruction that is consistent across the district. More about efficacy. There are some district investments that we're taking steps to get there. We're using assessment literacy. We're teaching and doing professional development in the, in the area of assessment literacy, both informative and interim and summative, and the way that these different types of assessment, of course, formative is when you're, is, is like when you're using assessment in real time to improve. And summative is more like when you have a grade, right? When you're actually measuring that based upon a standard. And so, both are critical, and so, we are doing that. We reviewed the Board of Education presentation on the data in the area of the, the MSEP changes themselves. So, there's, there's a shortened test. Remember that our, the next generation science standards, the science test is still in a field test, so the data is limited. Remember that we're going, Michigan adopted the next generation science standards, which I like because it integrates engineering in with science, so that's like a great thing to me. But what happened is on the MSEP then, before, of course, they start holding all teachers and districts accountable, we have to, they have to roll out example questions. And so, the last, this year and last year, or next year are still field tests where they're practicing on the questions, and the test, the MSEP organization itself is getting feedback. And then in the year 2020 is the year when these scores will actually start to be, with count, they'll start to count. And let's see. Proficiency, we looked at the district, county, and state levels. The data was shared to how we compare in the top five districts in the country.
County.
Sorry, guys. I just, and, and just keep saying country. I don't know. County, of course. The trend data. Remember that we have, we, we reviewed about the trends that, to recall, that every year we, like sixth grade, every year those students, of course, are different students, and they're moving up to the next level. So, the group, some of the groups are very small, and it's, it's something too important to look at when we are examining the data. We looked at the proficiency by student groups, as we always do. I mean, this is something we always do a deep dive into. We discussed what are the supports that we're offering families. For example, we're having, holding a literacy night, we have a ELL summer camp, and we discussed what can we do for our students who are more economically disadvantaged. We looked at the multi-year trends. We looked at multiple grade levels, the grouping of multiple grade levels together to look at the data, so we can get a better picture of how our implementations are working, because sometimes when the, when, you know, how statistics works, if you have, it's sliced too thin, sometimes you're not really looking at the trends as if you have a little bit larger slice, and that gives your data more validity. Thanks. We looked at the PSAT and SAT proficiency. Again, remembering that each year we have a new quarter of students, and we need to look at the trends, right? So, if the data's going like this, it doesn't mean that we, we should also be going like this. We need to look back at the trends. So, if the data's going like this, we look at the trends so that we can be more proactive and, and do a better job of providing interventions when needed. We had public comment, and we had Rena Zoritsky, a BHS parent, and she discussed how we could send assessment results to, oh, how we actually send the assessment results to family, and she requested that instead of sending it in, for example, an unsealed envelope, she doesn't really, she didn't, I'm paraphrasing. As a parent, she didn't appreciate that students could take their test scores out and share them with each other, and she would appreciate more consideration for an alternate way of distributing the results, perhaps directly to the parents themselves for consideration because, you know, students perform differently, and they have different challenges in their lives, and, and we want to keep the self-efficacy of all students at the forefront. So, she discussed how, is there perhaps a more, a more gentle way to be able to provide this feedback?
Is that Renu?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Ren, Renu.
Renew.
Sorry, I said Rena. Yeah, Renu. Is it R-E-N-U?
Yeah.
Oh, it's that R-E-N-A here. Okay, I'll have that changed. And Stephanie Kreider, a BHS parent, discussed the, the common and equi, the common resources and equitable distribution and methodology focus, the measurement of the evaluation tools, the math in the eighth grade, and the proficiency benchmarks. Two things that were brought up but were tabled because, you can see, we had a very large agenda. And so, we asked, we made a parking lot. So, the math pathway into, and according with eighth grade, including eighth grade, that is something we want to talk about in the future. And the M, the correlation of the MSEP to the SAT, how does it correlate? Does it correlate? It's something also we put in the parking lot to talk about in the future. And that is my report.
Questions for Jackie?
I just want to comment at the Strategic Planning Meeting that we had on Monday. Todd Bedlack and his Learning Services Team presented some of the same information, and one of the points that Todd made, spent a good, long time on it, is that by comparing one grade to the same grade year after year, you have cohort changes. So, therefore, it might not be the best measure for really comparing eighth grade to eighth grade year over year, but looking at the data longitudinally, whereby looking at the seventh graders compared, the eighth graders compared to last year's seventh graders and going backwards like that, you can actually see in general, obviously, students come in and out of that cohort, but it does give you a lot more consistency.
Right.
And, and, but, the growth, but you can also, you can actually compare year over year, because in general, it's the same kids. So, I think that might be something we should maybe consider in the future, is looking at it that way, as opposed to this eighth, eighth grade versus the last year's eighth grade.
Yeah, that makes much more sense. Any other questions or comments for Jackie?
Excellent report. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I kept saying country. Wishful thinking. Actually, I think it already...
Strategic planning time.
Yeah, yeah. It's right.
So, I know the Finance Facilities and Legal Affairs Committee met today. Mr. Bank, can you give us a report, please?
Yes, we met this afternoon shortly before the board meeting. There were six items on the agenda. I think the meeting probably lasted several days shorter than the BIC meeting. The first item on the agenda, we had Laura Clays and Josh Beath from Plant Moran, who comprise our audit team. They were present at the meeting, and they provide us with two very important pieces of information. One, we received an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of an audit opinion that we could possibly receive. The second was relative to the subject of compliance with federal regulations. There were no findings and no question costs, which again, is the highest level that we could receive. Based on these results, the district and Tina's team will be receiving two award certificates for financial reporting. So, it was an unqualified outstanding opinion. The second subject pertained to 2018 Summer Sinking Fund projects. The projects included, just mentioned a few of them, projects at Conant, the crosswalk at the high school, project at Eastover, and asphalt projects around the district. Two things of note. One, all the projects are done, but there are... but there are several punch lists which are still in process. Things that they're still working on just to fix a few little odds and ends and perfect everything. One thing, uh, there was more asphalt that they needed to use than was expected due to the harsh winter. And there was an increased cost which they expected, they thought it might be as high as $200,000, but it only went eighty or ninety thousand dollars beyond what they expected above and beyond what was originally budgeted for that. And the second thing that Brian reported was that the crosswalk uh, at the high school seems to be working very well in terms of serving its function of keeping people crossing in that specific area and doing so in an efficient and safe manner. The third subject was 2019 summer sinking projects. Uh, the list for that is in process and that should be available to us in the next several weeks. Brian did point out and remind us along with Dave Shulkin that the sinking fund can now be used for technology related expenses. And relative to that, they noted three particular things. One, the blue point system that we currently have in place in the high school. They're developing bid specifications for uh, blue point systems in the other schools other than the high school. Second was relative to the bus camera systems that we've been talking about for some time. They're continuing to vet different systems and they uh, showed us some examples today of a system that would have multiple views on the bus, not just one camera in the back or one in the front, but something that would have multiple views throughout the bus. And also an interesting feature that the stop arm, where people are required to stop when the buses stopped and loading uh, students, that the stop arm would have a camera on it that would potentially enable them to identify any car that violated in the license plate, the make, model and license plate on the car. The third technological issue that we talked about was a bus tracking app that should be available soon. We currently have GPS on our buses so that we know where the buses are at. But this would be an app that would be available to the parents so they can look and see where the bus is. But also, it would be able to provide notifications. So for example, if a bus hit the first three stops on time but then ran into a traffic jam and there were four more stops to go, it could send out a notification to the parents at those four remaining stops to say, hey, this is what's going on and this is what you should expect. So it seemed uh, it was pretty interesting. Uh, the fourth subject was uh, very short, but it was bus replacement planning. We continue to be on a plan to replace five or six units every year. And we are still on the twelve-year replacement schedule. And overall, Brian reported that that plan was working very well. The fifth subject was other vehicle replacement. And he quickly brought to our attention that a, a salt truck that we have that is vintage nineteen ninety-seven finally needs to be replaced and he's working on that along with a new vehicle for our master electrician and to serve his needs and making sure that uh, electric, electrical issues are addressed around the district efficiently and repurposing the existing vehicle uh, within the fleet. The last item on the agenda was a presentation by Dave Shulkin relative to technology. Uh, there were several parts to it. One part was that there's currently an RFP out for a tech design firm and that should be coming to the full board on October the twenty-fifth relative to awarding a contract. Another issue that he just updated on us, updated us on quickly had to do with cybersecurity and just in general, that there are ongoing efforts that we should be assured of that he, they're continuing to work on that on a regular basis. He did bring to our attention at the end, uh, four challenges that he was confronting, he and his department were confronting. Uh, the first being K through, the technology in K through eight classrooms that requires significant attention. Things such as promethium boards are starting to reach end of life or to the extent that they need repairs, the parts aren't readily, readily available. And uh, it's a concern for his department. Second, relative to the technology that we currently have, he estimates that over the next ten years, it's going to cost fifteen point four million dollars to maintain what we currently have. That's nothing new, but to maintain and keep functioning.
Over ten years?
Over ten years. Third was, he mentioned relative to things that they need to acquire more short-term, computer parts or computers, things like that, but the parts that go into them. Because of tariffs, uh, we can expect a higher cost. He said recently, it's been affecting us about ten percent on that, but he expects after the first of the year, uh, that could be as high as twenty-five percent. The last item and probably most significant had to do with training. And he brought to our attention, just by way of example, uh, over the past twenty-four months, there've been fifty major projects his department's taken on and there've been ten thousand tickets for service, whether it's repairs or just giving somebody an understanding or taking care of some issue somewhere. Ten thousand tickets. And because of that, their capacity to do additional training has been more limited than they would have preferred. And uh, he wanted to bring that to our attention, that there may, whether he needs additional staff or something uh, in the future, but it's something that we should be aware of and he wanted us to be aware of that and therefore I am telling you about it.
Talking about training, training of teachers.
Yeah, for example, if he wanted to do uh, training sessions around, given the limited resources of their department and having these ten thousand tickets and these fifty large projects and then the cyber issue, uh, security issue, last year, there just wasn't the opportunity that if there were more employees or other resources available to do the training that he would otherwise like to do. So he noted that for us and I presume at some point he'll come forward with a plan for uh, where he would like to go to address that. But right now, it's noted as a, a significant concern. And that was the complete agenda, other than there were a couple of minor things that not worth mentioning at the moment.
Okay. Questions, comments? Yes, Howard?
I also was in attendance at the FFLA meeting. One of the things that Laura Clays and Plant Moran mentioned, there's a new accounting standard that's coming about. It's been in the works for a few years. Officially, it's a GASB seventy-five, uh, which is the Accounting Standards Board ruling. And all across the country, what's happening is uh, if there are any what are called OPEB liabilities, which is um, other post-employment benefits. So when you retire, you get your pension, but you might also get in particular healthcare or life insurance continued. Those benefits uh, need to be accounted for. So those have been on the books of the state. But what the Accounting Standards Board say is that it has to be on the local districts' books, not just on the state's books. So uh, the uh, pension department in Lansing calculated this for all the different school districts in the state. And as of June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, each one of the school districts had to put this on the books. It's purely a bookkeeping exercise, but it is pretty significant for our school districts. It's about fifty-three million dollars. So that takes our liabilities, meaning the amount of money that we owe outside organizations, up by about twenty-three percent. So uh, this has been known, this is nothing new, this doesn't affect our fund balance whatsoever, but it is something that will be on our books as is, as will be on all five hundred and thirty-five school districts around the state.
The reason that's important is to the extent that uh, there's things such as bond ratings out there and they're looking at financials, you look at last year's, you can look at this year's, say, oh my God, this is a fifty-three million dollar change to the negative. But it's not that anything's necessarily changed for us, it's the way we have to report. And then it's not just the way Bloomfield Hills has to report it, but it's the way everybody has to report it. So it will impact all school districts across the state, none for the better. But the way uh, ratings agencies look at things such as bond ratings, it will likely have an impact uh, on everybody across the state.
And just to remind everyone here, um, we don't control what those numbers are. Those are, or not the numbers, the benefits. Those are all done by Lansing, by the legislature. It's not part of our contract negotiations, it's purely done by Lansing. And if you're a school district employee, these are the kind of uh, benefits that you're entitled to.
So Howard, I'll ask you a question. So last night at our legislative committee meeting, uh, we were discussing the Launch Michigan Initiative and um, as we go into next year and the potential negotiations that could come along in trying to um, create a, a, yeah, funding formula that all constituencies would be willing to buy into. What I think I heard our David Randall saying to us was um, that that unfunded liability could be part of a, a negotiating strategy in, in the trade-offs that might be needed.
The unfunded liabilities, whether it's on pensions or the benefits which is the OPEB, that is something that's not going to change. And the legislature has it set up right now through the governor such that that will be, that past liability will be paid off in, I think, twenty thirty-eight. What might change is which organization is responsible for actually seeing it in their books. Whether it's coming, uh, right now, it's a shared responsibility between the state and the school district. We see some of the numbers in our books and some of the other numbers are taken right off the top at the Lansing level before it even hits us. But a possibility is that it all would be done in Lansing through the school aid fund and um, it would not necessarily be coming through our uh, bookkeeping. But that's yet to be negotiated.
Better job of explaining that than I would, thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
I guess I was just going to say that about something totally different, the IT, is that um, I would think that um, as we make our plan, that it's pretty clear to see that perhaps more training also will be able to perhaps decrease the number of tickets too. Because if uh, teachers are more capable of, I know I can see it in my own faculty, right? I, if I have them sitting there and I show them how to bring something up, they're clueless, well, they feel clueless, right? They feel not confident if they're going to host something in front of students or other faculty. And so have, walking them through that, then they're able to do it. And then I don't have to, they don't have to call IT anymore to do it for them before every time they do that. So there's a very clear relationship between training and number of tickets. And so we have to make sure we get our training done.
That's the old feed a man of fish versus training pot of fish.
Exactly, we want them to also feel confident about it too.
Okay, anything else on FFLA? Okay, so um, one more item we still have on our general discussion is sort of a little more conversation about our strategic planning update. I don't know, something about that word just doesn't stay in my.
And country, yeah.
Really. I guess for me, um, first of all, I want to say again, thank you to all of those who have committed themselves to being part of that process because I, it certainly is a huge commitment of people's time to help us in, in generating these major, um, big hairy goals that we want to, to set as a, as a community, as an organization. And um, I think it's an exciting thing to be making those plans for the future and I hope, uh, I want to be, have people look at this as a, as a positive, exciting experience to be part of it. One of the things that has, we've been hearing some conversation, the board, we've been working with administration to look and refresh, as we're refreshing the strategic plan, refreshing our, our vision and mission along in the process. So um, we had conversation about potentially uh, voting to approve the work that the board has been doing tonight. But as we've been hearing some feedback, we think that there's um, an opportunity to engage and get some more um, feedback on it. And so um, I just want to give a little look back at where, how we got to where we are right now. So Rob and the, and the learning and services team brought in all of our, our whole, all of our principals, the whole learning services team. And they looked at the profile of a learner and then they looked back at our currently existing mission and vision statements and um, spent some time asking some critical questions about how those are serving us today. What do they like, what do they dislike? What, if they're, making some wonderings about, um, do they fit where we are today and where we are dreaming of wanting to be in the future? And they broke into um, smaller groups and discussed some of those guiding questions about our current existing mission and vision. And all of the um, report edits from each of those groups of, of, of learning services, folks from all of our principals, um, all of those, those notes from those conversations were provided back to the board. And um, in the, so then the board, independently of Rob and his cabinet, had an opportunity to consider all of that feedback that we were given. Cabinet sort of looked at it and they took the feedback from the board and those groups and gave us a draft, which a few weeks ago, the board looked at those drafts and we had some conversation with Kate Cornell guiding us and we, we talked through it for a couple of hours and we came up with um, some more feedback. What were the key words that we thought were important? What was the, kind of the big picture issues that we thought were important? And the administration went back to work again. And um, another ten days later, they provided with us another, and the board also considered what, where, with the work that we'd done and some of us gave some more feedback then. And then, so uh, we could go, we had another study session and we spent another two or three hours looking at the next draft and um, working very collaboratively and really, I thought, a great dialogue about what we hope and dream and want to inspire our, our, for, you know, inspirational statements and, and one, you know, the, the vision is where we want to get to, the mission is who we are, what we do today. And um, so we did come up with language as we were working together on that and um, I, I think we were going to, maybe have, Vicky was going to share that as those, as those are our draft statements that the board has been working with. But as we've been talking with our community and talking with each other, we think that we wanted to, our consultant subs important thought was that we had some guiding statements as we work with our, our community and our strategic planning process about how we think, um, our thinking on, on our statement, on our, our mission and our vision. But I, we think that as we get through that process, having that to, to, to look to, perhaps as we work with our, our committee, we may look back at it and see that it may need some movement. And so there will be an opportunity with, with, along with the goals that are developed through the planning process that, that'll all get posted on our website. There is already on our website just a couple of paragraphs about what we did this past Monday. It's already on the website now. As there will be updates with each of our, the sessions that we would do will be posted on our website. But then at the end of our process, the draft that we come up with as a whole group will then be sent out and be on our website and we will be asking for public comment for a few weeks. And that will, we will also have there, the vision and the mission that we have been putting up for comment like from our students, from our staff, from our community. So that we can be sure that we are all, to me, this is something, an exciting process we went through coming into it. I didn't think, I was thinking that we would want to change our vision, mission. I had, was very attached to what we've had. But as I listened to the feedback that we got from our services team and as we talked as a group, it made sense to me and um, I had the opportunity to look at websites from districts all over the nation, what they're doing with their vision, emission and values and um, it was, I, I got pretty into it, it was kind of fun. So, to me, it's all about making a, a statement that we can all agree with about what we, what our hopes and dreams are for, are for kids in our community. It should be an exciting, engaging, inspiring statement about what we want for all of our learners and we can, we can wordsmith as a, a group what that all looks like, you know? But I, I think all of us agree that the, that's what we hope to be able to do and provide for our families and why people help hopefully, it was, will be something that is easily memorable that people can say, that's why I want to come be, come to Bloomfield Hills Schools. Robbie, want to make some more comments about that?
I think that was an excellent summary of where we've been and where we're going and so what we have here as a draft is kind of wet cement, you know? It's, it's, it's enough to work from, uh, I think to, to guide the goal setting that the sixty so, or some so folks will do. And uh, when this is posted on, on the web for public comment or for, you know, for input and feedback, like the goals. I think that, you know, that'll be a further effort to make sure that we're, that what's there is. effort to make sure that we're, that what's there is consistent, and we can polish it up from there. Also, I think it's important to note that this strategic planning process, you know, there are different ways to do them. You've all been through them at various times in various careers. The way we did it 10 years ago was the way you did it 10 years ago. It was a much larger, broader, almost like a, I wasn't here, but it sounds like it was a fresh slate approach, and, and.
Yeah, we'd never had one before.
Ah, that's correct. You had not.
Literally, it was a clean sheet of paper.
Yeah, it was literally, one way or another, it was a clean sheet of paper. But, you know, as, as was noted, I think, in the process from our consultant, you just, that's not the world we live in. Five, five years is almost too long of a, of a plan. Things change quicker than that nowadays. So, you know, as a board, you know, you are the stewards of the vision and mission statement. It has existed, it did exist. You work from it to revise it, not to start with a blank sheet of paper, and this process moves pretty quickly. You know, that said, I think as you got into it, you realized maybe there was a need to change a few more things than you had originally conceived of, and I think everything's very consistent with what was there, but it's fresher. And so we'll just see what other people think about it, and it gives us a way to keep moving forward, and so, but I don't have anything to add, really. I think your, your summary was spot on, and I don't know if any others who, who were there, or any of you would like to add any questions or comments, but feel free.
Anybody else? Howard?
I think setting the mission and vision for the district is one of the most important things that a school board can do. This hasn't been done in 10 years, and most of us weren't even on this board at that time. So I take this, this task and this assignment very seriously. So I've been working on this for about six months or so, looking at, as Cynthia said, you know, benchmarking and looking at other districts. And quite frankly, some of the things that I've talked to Rob about doing internal benchmarking, and I think, I think this is a good example of it, some of the things that Learning Services put together were excellent, and something we should consider including. So on the, the vision, on the fourth line, where it says, so all achieve their highest potential, I would, I'm, I'm looking at that and thinking that instead of those, I'd like to go with the, some of the words that were given to us by, by the cabinet. So instead of achieve their highest potential, or sorry, their highest potential, just those three words, and replace that with unsurpassed academic outcomes. So I'd like to have us think about that.
Okay. Well, we will, we will think about that, Howard.
Thank you.
I have one public comment card this evening, and that is from Lisa Efras.
Lisa Efras, I have two children in the district, one in the high school and one in Bloomfield Hills Middle School. I, first of all, I want to thank you for agreeing to not put the vote for the vision and mission statement on the agenda for a vote tonight. I've heard a lot of feedback from the community, and I've urged, as I've urged in the last two study sessions before each of the board meetings, I think the vision and mission statement are two things that should be worked on by the Strategic Planning Committee. I realize the MASB has guidelines, and that this is something that's typically done by the board, but I also think that it's one of those situations, when I looked it over at home and had a chance to read it in context, it's not when the rest of the district is giving up 27 hours of time and is in the midst of strategic planning. I think what I'm hearing from the community and the people that I've spoken to is that they want to have a part in drafting those things. So I don't, I appreciate the delay of the vote, but if it's going to be delayed, posted on a website, and open for feedback, I, I don't think that's what the community's asking for. I think they're asking to have, to be a part of the process of developing it in collaboration with each other at the strategic planning sessions. We've got 21 more hours left. I don't know what we're doing for 21 hours, if it's not working on those two things. I realize that there's goals that have to go along with the strategic plan and that we can work on those, but to me, why eliminate the strategic plan and vision from the parameters of discussion of that group? Some of the best ideas, brainstorming, you're just going to get a better product the more input you have from the community. They're shaking their heads, I think, wondering what they're doing there if not that. And I appreciate the information being given to the community via PowerPoint. A lot of that, I think, could be either handed out the Monday before, the, the following Monday's strategic plan, and we can look it over at home, and then with the time that we have, we can work on collaboratively bouncing ideas off of each other for the strategic plan, mission statement, and vision for the district. I was here 10 years ago, I know Cynthia was too. We sat in a room and passed a stone around, and we created a vision and a mission statement together, and that's probably why you're tied to it. I am too. It was very collaborative. There was a lot of people in that room. I don't know, numbers-wise, what the comparison is, but it's doable in a room with 62 people or more. We did. What we produced at the end was something everyone was proud of. I don't know what the reluctance is to let this Strategic Planning Committee have a stab at it. So delaying it is good. Delaying it till after the strategic plan has all, everyone who's part of it has all had a chance to have input, then the community have input would be best. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have one item on our board business this evening, and that is the request to approve attendance at the National School Board Association Advocacy Institute in January. Do I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education authorize Howard Barron, Paul Colen, Jason Palatier, and Cynthia Von Owen to attend the NSBA Advocacy Institute.
And Equity Symposium.
And Equity Symposium of the National School Boards Association from January 26th to 29th, 2019, in Washington DC.
I have support.
Support.
Support from Mr. Bank. Any discussion? In case anybody were to ask, obviously, we have some folks who are approving this evening, where obviously it's contingent on outcome of, of the election, and we can always adjust things if we need to. So this way, we can be sure we get reservations for everybody who needs to, if we need to change that, we can. Any other comment? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So again, thank you, everyone, and have a great evening. Stay warm. Come out to the festival.